We're on to item A, City Manager's Report on Issues Raised at Prior Council Meeting.
Not at this time.
Item B, Special Events Applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is from Heckensack Meridian. They will be doing their gala at Convention Hall and need to close streets on September 13th. Next is Tailgate for Health to be held on September 15th. On October 1st will be Momo Fuku Leadership Dinner on Second Avenue Beach. The Zombie Walk will be on October 5th. Couple of clarifications with the Zombie Walk. Number one, only the 300 to 500 blocks of Cookman Avenue will be closed. At the 500 block of Cookman, the parade will merge onto Madison and continue to Main Street. The 600 and 700 blocks of Cookman will remain open this year. And the no parking signs on the 300 to 500 blocks of Cookman, well, that parking can go up until 1:00 P.M.
Yeah, and I want to thank the Special Events Committee and Leisha for taking some of the concerns that the business owners on Cookman Avenue have had about the Zombie Walk, because many of them have to go down, and it's just, it's a little disastrous. So we are diverting it. We are requiring you move your car a little later in the day so people can still park. And I'm hoping the chamber is going to maybe do a map or something, letting people know that the route has changed.
Yes.
So we should, yeah, we just got to remember to reach out to them.
Sure.
But great job.
Thank you. And also regarding parking, if cars are not moved by one, they will be told. I'll be working with Mike Manzella to get the word out about that. Next is Pride in the Park, which will be held on October 12th in Springwood Park. The next two applications are to use city facilities. One is for the City Committee Information Session, which will be used in the Senior Center on October 16th. And next is the PLW Chair Dedication, which will be held here in the council chambers on September 28th. The Equality Walk will be held on October 12th. Shop Here Now Sidewalk Sale would be on September 21st and 22nd. And we have one wedding on October 13th. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you email Sylvia, Sylvia, Leisha, and put me on that about getting the word out about the route change for...
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
We're on to item C, Items to be Presented by David A. Kaplan, Registered Municipal Accountant, The Report of the 2018 Audit.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to offer my appreciation for the opportunity to continue to serve as your independent auditor. I don't get a chance to see you all collectively too often, so thank you for that. I also want to let you know how much cooperation we received during the audit from your staff, from Michael's office, to Joanne, to the clerk, to everyone we visited, the court, the library, the construction, all the officials that we needed information from were just very forthcoming, and it really made our job a lot easier. So our responsibility is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. On August 8, 2019, we released the audit report, which was delayed by the state's contractor, KPMG, not releasing data that was an integral part of the audit. Gatsby 75 had to be implemented this year. It was implemented. As soon as we got KPMG's report, we plugged the numbers in that we needed to, and we filed. The filing deadline was extended this year to August 31st, so we filed on August 8th. We were within the state's deadline. Our opinion is unmodified on this regulatory basis of accounting. The financial statements are not prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. They're not supposed to be, and they're not. They're crafted on the regulatory basis that's promulgated by the Division of Local Government Services. So our opinion is unmodified, meaning that's really our highest form of assurance that the financial statements that we issued are in conformance with the basis of accounting prescribed by the state. We also give a report on internal control and compliance. That's an unmodified opinion as well. So that, as an auditee, that would be what you're looking for, unmodified opinions on both the financial statements and internal control and compliance, and I'm happy to report that's what we issued. Last year, when I was here, if you recall, I said how well the city did, and I thought probably you'd do better. And in fact, the results of the audit indicate that you did do better, and you're probably going to do better again in 2019, but you're in good shape financially. We did make three audit recommendations. You'll have to do a corrective action plan on them. I read the corrective action plan, and it addresses the issues. All three involve the sewer connection fee process. And for us to issue a report that focuses just on that one issue with all the things that we look at means that things are going really good in the finance department, too. So if you have any questions on the audit, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Should you, for the record, read the three comments?
There's a resolution that allies would change that to be done. So it's already there.
That's all the sewer plant ones, right?
Yeah, the three.
I have a quick question, and then I'll butt to John.
Also related, yep. Yes, Amy.
2018 was the first year we were off financial aid.
2018 is the first year you were without transitional aid.
Transitional aid.
Yeah.
And it looks to you like our finances at the end of 2018 were in good shape, or...
Yes. They were at records for the current fund, the sewer utility fund, the beach utility, and the parking. So the four main operating funds you have, current, water, beach, and parking, all were at record highs at the end of 123118. They were at record highs the last time I was here, 123117, and I said they'd probably do better. Clearly, they did better. So yes.
And now we're on financial aid and management, right, Michael?
Yes. It's making transitionally late. The state for this year and probably next year just wants to make sure we don't screw things up and wind up back in the financial hole that the city was for many years. It's more of personnel and larger-scale services, such as they want to review bond ordinances ahead of time, but so far, there's been no problems with anything. We've been doing very happily.
The three audit recommendations, and it all have to do with the billing for this sewer hookup.
Yes.
Just only three recommendations and just dealing with one subject, that's got to be an all-time low for us in past years?
Yeah, it's much better than last year. If you remember, last year, you had a material weakness in internal control over federal and state grants. That's gone this year. And yeah, with three comments focused in that area, as I said, you're doing really well. So I'm really happy.
I think with 2015, there was 21 findings, something like that, 21, 24 findings, which now have three.
And the only thing that I tell you this every year, to have a problem with your report is, it doesn't have pages. So when I refer to something, I try to find, like, so like Exhibit A, Sheet 2 of 2. A lot of people prepaid their taxes in pilots again, but not as much as the year before, like a million dollars less. Is that because of the Trump law, or did that, does that seem odd to you? Is that something that's going to continue to go that way?
No, 17 was an aberration. You're right, 17, people took advantage of the Trump loophole so that they prepaid their taxes to try and get a tax break in 2017. In 2018, that incentive was gone, and there should have been a big decline. We expected a big decline in prepaids, and there was a big decline. And not only here in Asbury, in every town. I have towns that went from 6 million to 300,000. So I think that was expected.
Okay, and again, we did extremely well with the 99.75 collection rate, and that's been the norm the past couple of years, so you see that continuing?
As long as you continue your practices with respect to collections, I do. I see that continuing. That's exceptionally high tax collection percentage.
And this is under note to regulatory basis financial statements. We did a bond sale in 2018. We issued $6.2 million in bonds through the Monmouth County Improvement Authority. And that was, I guess, I'm going to ask you a rhetorical question. I know what it was done, but I just want to confirm it. That was to lock it at a lower interest rate and save the taxpayers money? And was a good move by the city?
Monmouth County Improvement Authority offers a really good program. They offer very low cost of issuance and very competitive rates. So if you were going out for a sale, that would be the first place to look, and you did, and you took advantage of it.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Number of the pages next year.
Okay, sir.
We're on to item D, Review of Agenda Items for the September 11, 2019 Regular Meeting.
On the consent agenda items, 289 is Special Event Applications. 290 is a special item of revenue that is the Senior Center Grant. This is a Chapter 159. This is money that the city receives from the county. 291 is money that the city receives from the state for clean communities. These are insertation of budget revenue. 292 is canceling the professional services contract with T&amp;M to prepare documents for the proposed North End Boardwalk improvements. This was for T&amp;M to prepare, to design and bid the documents for the proposed boardwalk improvements. If I start, didn't do it, since I started doing it, we can cancel this. 293 is the 1033 Program. As you recall, a few years ago, this was in the news a lot. This is where a lot of municipalities were acquiring tanks, helicopters, boats from government surplus. This allows us to enter the program again, but the council back then, and we are continuing this approach, if the city obtains anything from this program, it is done by resolution. Whether it's munitions or a boat, we would come to the council first before acquiring anything. This just allows us to be in the program. And 294 is a refund on 301 Fourth Avenue for taxes. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on to the individual resolutions. 295 is accepting the 2018 municipal audit, and 296 is the corrective plan, since you just heard the auditor say. 297 is approving payment of bills. 270 is awarding the...
Hold on one second, please. On 296, I know you don't have a hard one. It seemed like the first page and the second page are... Am I reading this right? They're all duplications? Were there misprints? I meant to ask you this during the week.
No, it's listed correctly. It looks like...
The backside.
The backside, yeah. It looks like it was double printed.
Okay.
And then it just got scanned that way.
Okay.
But it's correct. Resolution 2019-270 is awarding a contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management. This was tabled at the meeting ago to present to the Sunset Lake Commission, but then we realized that this is actually for 2019 also, so it has to be approved tonight. And then I'm going to send a memo to the commissioners, which I am one of why we actually have to do this, because for services already rendered.
Is this only for 2019?
It's a two-year permit with DEP. So the DEP has a two-year permit.
It's only the DEP permit, it's not the contract?
We follow the same thing, because it's a two-year permit. So the contracts are for two years, because the permit's for two years.
And the contract is with Black Lagoon for two years?
Yes.
Okay. So we are doing two-year contracts?
Nineteen and twenty. And so a two-year contract, yes. 298 is authorizing professional service contract, IWS Consulting, for management assistance. This is to help me catch up on projects that have just taken forever. For example, review of the RCA program will be directed to IWS. I've been slowly going through old UEZ paperwork. We have about six filing cabinets that this needs to be done. So these are things that aren't priority but need to get done, so we can provide some services here. 299 is awarding the bid for traffic control signage. There was one responsible bidder. We're recommending award to this contract.
For how long?
It is two years?
Good, okay. I was hoping it's just up for three months.
No.
Okay.
Resolution 284 is referring to proposed amendments to the waterfront redevelopment plan to the planning board. Resolution 2019-300, I'm asking to be tabled, as we didn't have a complete application. I received it too late to pass out, so table it for the next meeting. Sackman Enterprises has been told of this, and they're fine with it. Resolution 301 is the cleanup of the Sunset Lake Master Plan Professional Services Contract. There was additional work that T&amp;M provided during the contract, and this is the change order authorizing it. Resolution 302 is the leasing of a factory-certified, pre-owned aerial ladder fire truck for the Fire Department. The Fire Department will be giving a little bit of an update after I finish this on their needs for this and for future apparatus. 303 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic signal equipment. 304 is the Summit Positive Displacement Pump for the sewer plant. Quite honestly, I don't know what that does, but Rudy is recommending that we replace it, and if Rudy recommends something, we by and large just go with it. We're in the process of doing a large-scale review of the capital in the sewer plant, so you might have that before you in the next two or three weeks, maybe no longer than six weeks, of a plan to actually start replacing the innards of the sewer plant. Many of these items are incredibly old, going on 30 years, and they're past their useful life, and obviously, we need the sewer plant to work. So expect that in the next month or so. Resolution 305 is purchase of cybersecurity testing services. More and more local governments are getting hit with denial of service and ransomware attacks. Atlanta was one of the big ones in the news recently. So talking to the Director of IT, IT Joe, we both feel that this is an appropriate time to have an independent party attack us. So what they will actually do is attack us to find vulnerabilities in our system. Joe got three prices. This is, they were all comprehensive, and this is who we're recommending to do this. Resolution 306 is annual service agreement for Power DMS for the Police Department. This is our internal software that manages notifications. Police and, do you guys have in fire, too? Police and fire both utilize this. And 307 is agreement with the Asbury Park Housing Authority for patrol officers to work overtime. This is the same thing as last year. It's approximately $16,000 where they reimburse the city for overtime, so our officers are in their complexes. 308 is a liquor license for Ohana Kitchen Company. And 309 is also a liquor license transfer from AP Restaurant 4 to AP Restaurant 5. Is there any questions on any of the individual resolutions? Hearing none, we'll skip ordinances for tonight, because there's introduction, and they're pretty standard, and the second reading is, we'll do...
Ordinance 201938 is listed as a second reading, and that's an error. It should be listed as a first reading. It was tabled at the last meeting.
Okay. That's all I have.
We are on to item E, Matters from the City Council.
This Saturday at 10 o'clock, there is a cleanup that's going to take place at Sunset Lake from 10 to noon. The D.O.L.A. Commission has, is providing educational seminars for rain gardens. So anyone who's interested in designing or having a rain garden or learning how to design a rain garden, that will be provided by the D.O.L.A. Commission, and it will be Wednesday, September 18th at 6 o'clock at the Ocean Township Senior Center on West Park Avenue. If anybody's interested, I have the flyer. Also, energy assistance is available to help those who are having trouble paying their bills. New Jersey Natural Gas will be on hand for a seminar Tuesday, September 24th, from 9 to 6, at the Salvation Army Building at 605 Asbury Avenue. That's it.
Zagster is looking for employees to help manage the Asbury Park Scooter Police. You must be 18 years old and have a valid driver's license and be able to lift a 20-pound scooter. If anyone's interested, you can email recruiting@zagster.com. And on September 14th, there will be another expungement session at St. Stephen's Church, and that's at 11:00 A.M., and that's located at 1,001 Springwood Avenue. That's it for me.
Okay. Thursday, September 19th, from 10 to 11, at the High Votage, 8008 Springwood Avenue. You can have a call with me and Councilwoman Lynn Chapman, and we can discuss various things that you have in mind about council, so what's going on in the city. We welcome you. We invite you. Please try to show up. Thank you.
First is a question. Fred, can you give us, can you give us an update on the affordable housing?
Sure.
Stuff you're working on?
I attended a meeting in August with the Affordable Housing Coalition, which also included yourself, the new mayor, and Councilwoman Clayton, and members of the city staff, as well as attorneys for the Fair Share Housing Center. And as per the discussion at that meeting, I'm currently working with the city's Affordable Housing Planner, Beth McManus, in order to finalize our submission to the Superior Court regarding approval of the city's Fair Share Housing Element, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. And Ms. McManus is currently working on the service list that accompanies the submission to the court, and we're working together on that. I've also been in touch with Josh Bowers, who was one of the Affordable Housing, Fair Share Housing attorneys, who was present at that meeting regarding the proposal that Fair Share had made about pursuing consent order regarding the city's Affordable Housing trust fund, and we're hoping to get that submitted as a key as well.
And any time for it?
I would say, based on where we are now, by the end of the month.
Okay. All right. So for Asbury Park residents, you should have gotten the Fall Newsletter, so kudos to Sonia for, one, dealing with our postal service, which is difficult to say the least, and, two, for doing a great job on a newsletter. We hope we got you up to speed on all of the fall events that are coming up. The second event I'm going to talk about is Shop Here Now, which is being sponsored by the Asbury Park Business Committee. And just so people know, we were trying, if you lived here during Bamboozled, you saw people get off the train, walk down Cookman, not stop anywhere, and go immediately to the Bamboozled Festival, and it had a devastating effect to some businesses in town. And See Here Now has been really wonderful. You can go in and out. They encourage you to shop local. They have local vendors and all of that. But at our last Business Committee meeting, we talked about, you know, trying to capture those people going from the train to See Here Now Festival. So we are having downtown businesses put out, you know, any sort of, you know, tables or, you know, materials and stuff like that down Cookman or outside of your own business. You know, so if you're off the beaten path of Cookman, you can certainly put it out on your store on Madison or Bangs, but if you actually want to have it on Cookman, which is where we generally see people go, the Business Committee is here to help make that happen. So that is on Saturday, September 21st and Saturday, September 22nd, and that initiative is being led by Kathy Kelly of Paranormal and Bianca of Interwoman. So you can reach out to me, and I can get you in touch with them, or reach out to Sonia, and we can get you in touch with them if you don't have their information. So that is our Shop Here Now, initiated from the Business Committee. And then last is just housekeeping. If you have a pit bull and you need your pit bull spayed or neutered, you will be given a discount. You do have to go to, if you live in Long Branch, Asbury Park, or Neptune, you have to show proof. You will be given a discount. You do have to go to the Eaton Town, Monmouth County, SPCA office to have that done. So if anyone needs more information on that, can email me or the city, and we will get you. And it's, oh, the neutering and spaying is free. Okay, so it's free. So get your animal neutered or spayed.
That's it. Just a little bit more on the Shop Here Now. Any business, please make sure you leave a five-foot path sidewalk, because, right, there's going to be a lot of people getting off the trains. Go in there, so it's the same if you have a cabaret license or an outdoor vendor's license, you got to leave a five-foot path. So don't put all your stuff right to the curb, please. On Sunday, at Home Drugs, 14 Main Street, is the Mayor's Wellness Tailgate for Health. It's going to be big-time TV, watching the Giants game and eating a bunch of healthy food and giveaways and prizes and everything.
Booze.
What?
Booze.
Booze, no.
Okay.
So we would like to see everybody get out there. There's going to be some unhealthy food, too, so, but it's going to be a great event. We can't thank Vic from Home Drugs for doing this for the city.
What time does it start?
It starts at 1:00. Same as the kickoff. And I know, who are the Giants playing this week? Buffalo. Buffalo Bills. Well, Buffalo will be 2-0. Don't say that. So no, please, if you just even stop by, just say hello. They make a whole, I'd be appreciative. Mike'd be appreciative. The Wellness Committee would be appreciative, and I think Vic would be appreciative, so. And it's rain or shine. It'll be fully tenet in case it does rain, so, and he's emptying out his parking lot. It's all contained right outside, so it's very nice. And the only thing else I have is, I'd like to sincerely congratulate the Chamber of Commerce for having a wonderful Oyster Fest. I know they got rained out Friday. If you're going to lose a day, that was the best day to lose it, number one. It's a short day, it's free, but they really hammered it on Saturday and Sunday. I'm just so happy for them. It was a great, great festival. So if you didn't attend this year, please think about attending it next year. That's all I have. Thank you.
We're on to Matters from the City Manager.
None at this time. We'll go back to the Fire Department. Oh, and I had the census thing.
Yes.
I forgot about that. So next year is the census. I am the lead responsible person for the census, and one of the things that the Census Bureau is recommending is the Complete Count Committee be formed. This is a collaboration of local groups, government entities, school districts, to make sure that everyone is counted. So a committee is going to be formed. In the next week or so, myself and Sonia are going to be working on a press release to get interested organizations involved of being counted. This is going to be a lot of work and effort, as we want everyone in the city to be counted. It impacts everything, from federal funding to crime rates to per capita costs. So we are going to make a concentrated effort to make sure that we can get everyone counted. The census people might be here in October, and one of the things that they wanted to stress is that they are hiring. They are both hiring people with and without documentation. So they want to get everyone out, especially in non-English-speaking communities. So anyone can be hired for a census job. It does not matter immigration status. So they asked me to make sure that that's brought out. So we're going to be looking for any organization in the city that's interested in doing this. We've had some statewide agencies also going to be approaching us. We are going to be canvassing the streets during the census to make sure everyone's counted. This is the first step in it. That's all. Thank you.
Can I just do one very quick announcement that I should have done? Yvonne, I think many of you know, and I have been working on a Human Rights Relations Committee and met probably, met with community leaders, different community leaders, about once a month for the last six or seven months. But we, and in our last step, before we kind of take all the information that we got and put it together and present, is a survey, a public survey, that we are asking members of the public to provide feedback. So I know Michael and I went through a couple of drafts, and it should probably be up sometime next week. We're asking people to take that survey and give us their feedback on a Human Rights/Relations Commission. That's it.
How will it be done?
How will the survey be done?
Yeah, online, or what? How about people did it on computers?
We usually paper copies available in City Hall.
Yeah. Why, do you think I should go out?
I think they should go to churches, barber shops, libraries, every place.
Okay. But then they have to be brought back.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just have to think that. I'm not against the idea. We just have to think that through. How, if I drop them off, are they going to bring them back?
Well, churches will.
Okay. Sure. By me.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the remaining item is the fire department discussing their needs for apparatus. As, so as many of you know, our fire department has been getting busier and busier. With that, our equipment has been getting older and older. It doesn't get any younger. Most of the equipment that we've had has been refurbished or reconditioned over the years. So one of the things that we've been working on, mostly the gentleman to my right, has been a five, six-year improvement plan to upgrade the equipment as needed. So with that, I'm going to allow the fire department to introduce themselves, who they are, and their ideas of what's coming. These are larger-scale items. Internally, what we do is I keep an Excel workbook of capital improvements requests from every department for a six-year period, which is the state law required. So their information gets plugged into it, and we always try to keep our capital programs static from year to year. So their requests get built in, which then get presented to you guys at the beginning of every year, but these are larger purchases. These aren't like buying a thirty-five-thousand-dollar SUV. These are hundreds of thousands of vehicles, dollars of vehicles, that take eighteen months, twelve eighteen months to actually arrive, because they're incredibly complex and hard to build. So with that, gentlemen, your show.
You pretty much covered that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pretty much everything that the city manager covered, yeah. My name is Bob Pascual, I'm Battalion Chief in the Fire Department. I work in the office with Chief Kettie in administration when I'm not covering a shift. Primarily, one of our objectives for coming up with this plan was to allow you, the administration and the governing body, better financial planning for what we plan to come and ask you for in the future. From our perspective, it allows us to more structure our larger purchases. As the city manager said, the fire apparatus are larger purchases, both financially on your end, but from our end, from the date the purchase order is issued, they take twelve to fifteen months to deliver. So it's not like if one of our apparatus stopped working tomorrow, we could find one the next day and be okay. So we wanted to structure the replacement program a little bit, so we would have more reliability in the fleet. To speak to some of the immediate needs, mostly the remaining two thousand and nineteen and what we plan to request in the two thousand and twenty capital budget, you'll see that you'll notice there's a resolution tonight for a used aerial ladder. To be succinct about it, how we got to this point is, our current reserve ladder is a nineteen ninety-five that we purchased used in two thousand and six. It was condemned in December of two thousand and eighteen. The aerial ladder was condemned by the third-party testing company, which is required to test it annually. We received a quote from the manufacturer for two hundred and twenty-six-ish thousand dollars to replace that aerial ladder, which doesn't even begin to fix all the other things that are broken on a twenty-four-year-old piece of apparatus. So in short, it's just not financially feasible to throw good money at that apparatus any longer, which begs the question, then, why are we asking to purchase a nineteen ninety-nine apparatus? The intent of this purchase is as a stopgap measure. We intend to request money for a new aerial apparatus in next year's capital budget. But again, even if we get that money in next year's budget, we don't see the actual apparatus until two thousand and twenty-one-ish mid-year sometime, which leaves us about two years with only one aerial apparatus. That aerial apparatus, we also purchased used in two thousand and seven. We refurbished it in two thousand and thirteen, but it was not a full refurbishment, because we did not have the funds available at that time to do that. So in short, that aerial apparatus is still forty-nine years old, and that's the only apparatus that we're operating, the only aerial apparatus that we're operating right That's pretty much the immediate needs.
Chief?
Any questions?
Which one is the one with the tiller at the back?
That's the condemned one.
That's the condemned?
Yeah, that's the one that we'd be replacing.
And what are we going to do with that?
So we've, we tried to trade it in. Unfortunately, I was pretty much nicely told, it's a niche-type piece of apparatus, and there's not too much trade-in value.
Ironically, or coincidentally, I should say, I got a call, I got a call Monday. There's interest in that, but the reality is, it's not going to fetch a lot of money on the open market. We will probably have to go through gov deals anyway, as it's deemed surplus property, but there is some interest, we'll get something for it.
And the one that we're going to buy now for the backup is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand or something like that?
So the used apparatus is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The manufacturer has agreed to, in the contract, to guarantee us a trade-in value of a hundred thousand dollars if we make a new apparatus purchase within twenty-four months. So in essence, it allows us the flexibility to lease it, to recoup some of the money we're going to outlay now if we purchase a new one. If we choose not to purchase a new one, it's ours, we bought it, we can keep it until it's...
No, that was very good negotiating. Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
We're on to item G, matters from the city attorney. We will take a short break, and the regular meeting will begin at seven p.m. Call to order, Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. Please stand in a moment of silence and remember of the victims and families of the tragedy eighteen years ago today. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January second, two thousand and nineteen, and posted on the bulletin board on the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to public participation. Do I have a motion to enter?
Move it.
Second, all in favor? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes.
How you doing? Cami? First through four oh one First Avenue. Like to talk about, I hit my breaking point with a Del Monte motel on my street. Saw a body bag come out the other morning. The coroner's office doing investigation, taking evidence out, but seeing a human being coming out in a body bag, I've kind of hit my breaking point with this for years now. The fights, the robbery, the breaking in my house by residents over there, I can't take it anymore. I really am. It's getting old. I've called the state, I've called you guys. The state says, well, it's the town, the town says it's the state, and I really do believe it is the state, but no one's doing anything. It's just getting worse and worse over there. I mean, it's disgusting. I constantly pick up beer cans the residents throw, I constantly find needles. It's getting old. It's got to stop, and I'm sick and tired of the finger pointing. Like, I need you guys to help me here. I'm calling the state constantly, I'm calling the DCA. Oh, no, we can't do anything about that. It's ridiculous. I invite any of you guys to come sit at my front porch and to watch what goes on on a regular basis. It's getting old. It's getting really old. I mean, you guys wouldn't live across that either. When I moved there, I said, okay, it was up for sale, it's sold, and the zoning board, in their infinite wisdom, seemed to think that it's like not good enough to have fifteen condos built there. I don't understand. It's just, it's getting crazy. So we have a really good solution to get rid of that, yet the zoning board doesn't think it's a good idea. They don't live there. I live there, my neighbors live there, and we're all tired of it. So I would love to hear from you guys. I'd love, you can come walk the neighborhood with me, take a look. I got a boarded-up apartment building, and the police are there today, the police are there every day, literally. Ask any police officer in this room, every day they're there. It's out of control, and now a body bag comes out. So, I mean, come on. I see drug deals constantly, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I see prostitution, I see it all. I need help.
What is your address?
I'm sorry?
What is your address?
Four oh one First Avenue.
And your name, I didn't catch your name, so...
Question? Hubert? Don't put that newspaper on my front door. I just, I can't take it anymore. So please, I'm begging for help. We reached out to you guys and just, and I appreciate, I'm not blaming you guys, I'm really not, it's just, I can't live like this anymore. Watching people urinate out their windows, because the owner testified at the last zoning board meeting that they have a hundred people in there, any given night, a hundred people, and I got up and asked him, how many toilets you got? Got twelve toilets. How does it make sense? People shouldn't live like that. Children were living there, I had to call DIFIS, they finally got them out. I mean, you got six Megan's Law offenders living in there, God knows how many other ones that are on the record. Please, I'm begging you, you guys have to do something here. I'm going to follow up with an email to you guys. I need something here. It's not safe for me, it's not safe for my neighbors, not safe for the police, not safe for the EMTs that go in there, and not to mention, you know, shooting another boarding house down the street, where a resident attacked the police with scissors. So, you know, where are we doing all along in boarding houses? You know, DCA won't do anything. They just, they literally step back, they don't want to do a thing of us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, and I know it's bad, I know where you live, and, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, DCA has total jurisdiction over that building, where if they're not responding tomorrow, please send our senator or two Assembly people an email saying, please get to Asbury Park and tell us what the hell's wrong with it.
I reached out to them, too. They can go call, email those people. I've reached out to everybody out there, and nothing...
Okay, and I know you know the past history where we tried to send our inspectors there, and DCA wouldn't let them go in, so our hands are tied, but this is ridiculous, that DCA is saying they cannot respond.
Yeah, and again, I said, I don't believe...
No, no, I know that, but I wouldn't want, I know where you live, you have a very nice neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to go through that myself, but for DCA to say they won't respond, I don't care a damn. Coaster, please, please put that on the headlines of your paper. You know, this is ridiculous.
Do it on the front page of Asbury Park Press, people's disgusting place in Asbury Park to live.
Okay, so can we find out from DCA and Gopal and Hoteling and Downey what's going on?
Yes.
Okay.
I waited three years till I came to know what you guys are here, and here I am.
Thank you for your patience. Next.
Ernest McDonald, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, oh seven seven one two. I'd like to say thank you, my voice is returning. I got a clean bill of health from surgery and radiation. I'm now cancer-free. And of course, I guess who doesn't know, I'll publicly announce it now on AP-TV, and hopefully all those people listening in other municipalities will know that I'm the victim that had both cars trashed, that the Monmouth County Prosecutor arrested two Asbury Park Police officers, and in fact, we have the PIO officer here, Mr. Casey, who refuses to communicate with me. I'm also a member of the press, aside from being a victim, and of course, the illustrious Mr. Capabianco, who has for years cut off my emails, so I'm not able to keep this in the public eye and have it to protect myself, to be able to send documentation. So I have to come in and file police reports. And anyone who's ever tried to file a police report or complain against the Asbury Park Police knows it's a unique experience. It's sort of like you have to visit Venezuela to get a feel for what you're going to be in for. And me personally, I don't think any of the smiles and smirks of the council, the mayor, the city manager, the city council, the deputy city manager, the police chief, who sits here with people crying their concerns out, and this police chief will not show up in a uniform, will not address the public, will not answer questions, will not answer emails, will not be available to meet with people, and he should resign, the city manager should resign. The city's out of control, we're being killed, beaten, abused. You know, to have two Asbury Park Police with knives and guns, with disguises, come out in the night and come to a temporary hotel where I live in Ocean Grove, and you, if you see my car, if you don't think that's the epitome of bias and hate, right? And then they go to my other house on Deal Lake Drive, and they attack my other car viciously, right? Ten hours later, twelve hours later, the prosecutor arrests them, it's all over the news, I'm getting calls from radio, everybody wants to know what is going on in Asbury Park. And I'm telling everybody, but where do you get here? Nowhere. Just a bunch of smirks by a bunch of people that, I never voted for you, but you're here. How do we get rid of people that don't do their job? A city manager, who's in charge of the police and the fire company, who has no idea of anything what's going on. And he's nasty, rude, crude, indifferent, he employs the Ansel Graham Aaron lawyer, Mr. Raffredo, to harass us, to shut us down. I mean, where are we? Where are we, really? And everybody should read...
Thank you. Next.
We know where we're headed, right, Mayor?
Excuse me?
We know where we're headed.
Long Branch.
Thanks.
Drive safe. We're going to close it, we're going to close it.
Okay, switching gears a little bit. Hi, Sylvia, Sylvia, the Executive Director for the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. A couple of things. One, as you know, we have won Monmouth County's favorite beach for the last three years in a row, and I had mentioned to Claire Antonucci from the New Jersey Sea Grant Consortium that I thought that was just like stupendous, and I have all three of the placards in my office, and that I wanted to give my placards to you guys or to the beach or to DPW, because all of you are the reason why we win this every year, not me. And they went ahead and they made placards for all of you with all three years on it, so I have them here with me, so I will leave them here with Mike, and if you'd like to give one over to the beach office, as well as DPW, or keep them here, whatever you'd like to do with them, I'd like to thank you for everything that you do there. I also want to thank everybody, we had a fantastic Oyster Fest this year. I think, from what I understand, I don't have any final tallies or anything yet, Saturday might have been the best one in its thirteen-year history, so I'd like to thank our police department, fire department, DPW, our EMT, they were all spectacular. Friday night didn't look like it was going to be any different than last year's hurricane, and they were absolutely spectacular, keeping everybody safe when my fences came down and when my porta-potties fell over, we did not open. The next day we did, and it was spectacular, and I don't know what other town you could be in where the mayor is volunteering at the front gate, and I get all of my news from the deputy mayor's Twitter feed, so thank you for helping to get the word out that we canceled Friday night, that was a big deal. This year, we did do a couple of things a little bit differently, and it was about a week in advance, I asked if we could get a banner made really quickly. We decided to give all active military veterans and all of their dependents complimentary entry through the whole festival, so we put a big sign up outside. I hope that word gets around for the next, you know, in the next few years, so that we have a large turnout of that. We used to be, just on Friday night was community night, so that was very well received. And this year, we gave all nonprofits that serve Asbury Park, that wanted to be a part of the festival, free space to get their word out, and we're also partners with Asbury Park Toy Drive, and I don't have numbers yet of what we'll be able to donate to them, but I'm pretty confident it's going to be well over five thousand dollars, so it was a great year for everybody, and thank you all. One second.
Thank you, and just so you know, you were a little bit late, we commended you and your entire chamber, where there was a great event, and we know you lost Friday, but Saturday and Sunday you really hammered it, so we hope that it was a record year, and it'll be better and bigger next year, but again, thank you for everything.
Thanks, Sylvia.
Thanks, Sylvia.
Hello. Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. Last meeting, I meant to say this, but I forgot, we were talking, you know, this weekend, we were talking about the school board at the Housing Authority, homeowners Association, and there was chatter about the abatements and property that do not pay school tax, even though they still pay the same amount of tax. One of these ideas that I wanted to bring up is what they're doing in Jersey City. So they have the same pilot program, similar, and gave same abatements and, you know, detours, but what they did is, once the money, the city received the money that were, that was earmarked for the school board, they just gave it back to the schools. That plus an auditing system inside of the schools, and maybe a joint assessment, because previous we were talking about it when I was on the board, of maybe having a joint office with the tax assessor and with the business administrator at the high school, I mean, at the board... I mean, at the board office, to come together on a regular basis and, um, go over the budget. That might help with the, um, the staggered deficit, um, so it's without a huge impact to the city. And, um, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Kristen Wardlow, Grand Avenue.
Hey.
Oh, sorry. Kristen Wardlow, Grand Avenue, is that better? Yeah, okay. Uh, so I've been a resident of Asbury Park for six years, and before that, I lived right over the Sunset Bridge in Wana Masa. I've seen the hard work and determination that has gone into restoring Asbury, and I find it truly inspiring. Inspiring enough that I stand here today to propose something that has been proposed not only once, but twice before to the council. We are in desperate need of a dog park. Currently, we have two options, Yappy Hour at Wonder Bar, or the 8th Ave Dog Beach. While these are fine options for some, they leave a majority of dog owners left out between their seasonal hours, overcrowding and lack of, uh, enclosure. Residents of Asbury Park deserve a fenced-in, year-round dog park where dogs can safely exercise. I propose a section of Liberty Park on Grand Avenue between First and Asbury Ave, specifically the Grand Ave portion. This park is already maintained by the city, has some dog waste stations, is great walking distance to the boardwalk and Cookman, and is mainly surrounded by churches and the library. Um, there will be a set of, there will be a strict set of rules listed at the entrance, including 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM hours, enter at your own risk, no excessive barking, and vaccination requirements. The fencing, picnic tables, and any other seating will be crowdfunded, which I think is very important, because it creates a sense of ownership and responsibility within the community. Not only do I believe a dog park will help our residential community, but I believe it will also help our business community. Every year, thousands of people come to Asbury Park to experience our restaurants, shops, and waterfront. A majority of these people are coming with their dogs, as they have been told or read that Asbury is a dog-friendly city. How does a city who markets themselves as dog-friendly get away with not having a standard dog park? As mentioned before, the section of Liberty Park that I am proposing is perfect walking, walking distance to Cookman and the boardwalk. If a dog park is approved, I foresee it driving more revenue into Asbury, being that people will be more likely to utilize our dog park than stroll up to the waterfront or Cookman, where stores that are mostly owned by Asbury natives will see the benefit. That's, that's it.
Well, thank you, and if you want to shoot either me or the city manager an email, and we'll set up a meeting and explain to you, you mentioned two other times it's been proposed, and we'll tell you what the faults were and why it didn't happen, and see, if it's something that can be done, we'll look at it, but in the past, it couldn't be done, because of money problems, everything, as much, we just had the audit report that we're in good financial shape. Everybody in the world's come and knocking on our doors, "Can you give us $500,000 for this? Can you do this? Can you do that?" It's not necessarily the cost, it's also, the, it, it, we'll, we'll meet and we'll explain to you why it did not happen in the past.
Okay, so, um, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. To get your contact, is it on the website, your email?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you leaving right away? You can, it's boring. I, I'll give you a card now.
I also have a petition that was signed, can I get that to you?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully it's from everybody from Asbury Park and our whole township.
I told everyone that would likely utilize a dog park, even if they weren't Asbury residents.
Okay, but thank you very much. Shoot me an email, do not text me, they'll ta, they'll all tell you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue. Regarding the dog park, fine, I have a doggy parade in front of my house all the time, and my question is, how many of these dogs are registered or have licenses in Asbury Park? Is there any way you can track it, or what happens if they're not licensed? And that's a question. Most, most of tonight with me is gonna be questions. The second question is, um, your resolution, 2019-292, canceling a professional services contractor to T&amp;M Associates to prepare documents for the proposed North End Boardwalk improvements, that's all we get, is that. And I have my question to you, is, why and will it be awarded to somebody else? So I need that explained to me, and the other explanation is, um, 2019-298, authorizing a professional services contractor, IWS Consulting LLC, for management assistance, I'd like an explanation on that. That's all.
Okay, I'll take the easy one. Tomorrow, call Melody and she'll tell you how many dog licenses were issued as of today.
Two hundred and eighty.
Two hun, two hundred, and we have a lot more than two hundred dogs in this town, so, as far as enforcement, I don't know who's...
That's all?
Yep.
I swear, I think everyone that has an apartment around me has at least two, but go ahead.
Okay, well, and a lot of people don't get the licenses, which is wrong. Uh, Michael, the other questions?
Uh, we did a dog census about two years ago. The state changed their law that it's not required, but it's something we'll probably do every three to five years, um, but we know that there's unlicensed dogs, but it's, it's an enforcement issue. Uh, 292 is the resolution, um, removing the contract for T&amp;M, for them to design and construction manage the boardwalk. As I Star said, they'll be doing it, there's no reason to give a contract to T&amp;M, there's no cost, no expenses, they're just not doing it anymore.
Okay.
Um, 298 is IWS Consulting, it is to help me try to catch up on some longstanding projects. As I explained in the workshop, for example, we need to review the RCA program, um, the UEZ program has six filing cabinets upstairs that has to be looked at, um, we're gonna be starting the union negotiations, so that takes dozens of hours of my time reviewing where awards have been going, um, so that we can get projects, like these special ones that are important but aren't urgent, try to knock all these things out that we've been wanting to do for years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. Whoop. Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. Uh, there's a saying that says, "If you see something, say something," but I guess it doesn't apply to Asbury Park, 'cause as soon as you say something, you get your tires slashed and your windows broken. I, I, I think that somebody from that council, or the city manager, should have had at least an apology in the paper, for, to a taxpayer, whether you like him or not, it doesn't matter. Yeah, I mean, the city manager's not there to judge people, whether he likes you or not. If you speak up, he doesn't like you, he likes the quiet ones, fine. The other thing I wanted to talk about, there's a sign on the boardwalk that says, "Skate, no skateboards, bicycles, or dogs," after, I think it's ten o'clock. And all you see after ten are skateboards, bicycles, and, uh, what do you call it?
Dogs.
And dogs. So what's going on here? The cops ride up and down in those, uh, little electric cars, and everybody's got a dog barking. And it's late at night, doesn't anybody read the sign, or isn't there anybody to control this? Skateboards, bicycles, and dogs. I mean, after all, there, there's other people that want to walk the boardwalk that don't have an animal, and it's not fair. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was Ernie again. I think you owe him an apology, whether you like him or not, just because he, uh, put in a complaint, he gets both his cars slashed, and both his cars broken windows? I mean, it's really not, um, nobody said anything, except the police chief made a brief statement. There are a lot of good cops, I agree, but there's also a lot of bad ones. I experienced that in my own business. But at least say something in a paper. He's got a fan club now, because everybody feels sorry for him. It's not, it's not right, it really isn't right, and you're too busy up there, then you are cutting ribbons and having a social life and getting your pictures taken? And the other thing I wanted to talk about, I heard that Jesse's in charge of a fashion show. Well, I have to remind Jesse, that's not your job. I, I think you better read the rules about being a council person, and it's not being social, it's being fiscal. And that's one thing, I, I don't know what the fashion show's about, how much money is it gonna take? Who's gonna benefit from it? I mean, just because we have a slush fund now and, and making a lot of money, that doesn't mean you could waste it. I heard it was gonna be like $8,000, is that true? I'd like an answer to that one. Is it?
When you're done with...
And what's the fashion show about? To have politicians there?
As far as the fashion show, if you want to attend the next, I'm sorry, if you can't...
I can't hear you, John.
I'm sorry. Let's go back to as far as the dogs. Come September fifteenth, I believe, dogs are allowed on the boardwalk twenty out, four hours a day. Skateboards, probably not, but I don't know, so I'm sure the police will look into that. Uh, as far as the fashion show, unless Jesse wants to respond, he'll give you the date of the next recreation committee meeting, and you can go there and ask the questions there.
What?
It's part of the recreation committee.
It's part of the recreation...
How is that recreation, when you're gonna have politicians there? You know what it's for that. Those of us that are involved in politics know all that. Why are we having a fashion show? That's not your job. And I wish the city manager would tell you that. It's not fair. It's ridiculous. You have a fashion show, you have all these social things...
Okay Rita, your three, your three minutes is up, so if you don't like the answer, then...
No, I don't like the answer.
Okay.
I'd like an accounting of that fashion show, because I don't think, last year we got an accounting.
Well, you, you...
I forgot about it, it was last year.
You, you can opere that after the event, because we can't give you what it's gonna cost until the event's over.
Rita. Uh, excuse me. Now, we've been, we've been knowing one another a long time, and then we haven't had many conversations over the telephone, and you know you can call me, you've been in my house, I've been in your house, I don't think anything has changed until just now. It's just, I hope this ain't personal, 'cause I respect you awfully, okay? I hope it's not personal, and any questions, you know, I'd be willing to answer them. If we're out on hand some...
Why are we having it?
We, we'll talk about that later, okay? We have the recreation director, we have the city manager, we have the mayor, we're, 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 we'll talk about it later, yes.
Oh, and there's a politician gonna be in a fashion show? Yes. That's wrong, and you know it.
Not if you're trying to bring...
If you're gonna put politicians, then put both sides.
There, there are. Oh, there are.
There are?
There are.
Oh, good.
Okay, well, we're gonna talk.
That's it. Rita's happy, she said, "Oh, good." Okay. Next.
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I, um, work at Rutgers University, and I, I just come acro, I came across this, um, paper, and I thought it was really interesting. It won an award, it's by a Rutgers Law student, it's called "Inequitable Gentrification: A Form of Exclusionary Zoning That Violates the New Jersey Constitution." And the first couple pages focus on Asbury Park. And I do want to read you just a, a part of it, because it talks about, um, in 2002, Asbury Park, a historic shore town with a population of 17,000 people, and a poverty rate of 30,000, undertook a massive redevelopment project. The goal was to generate new tax revenue for the city by transforming the historic beach town from a vast wa, slound, land, I'm sorry, to a great community to live in all year round. The plan included the development of 3,164 housing units, as well as the addition of 450,000 square feet of real retail space. The city of Asbury Park put considerable resources behind this plan, including agreeing to utilize the right of eminent domain on behalf of the master developer. Expedite the review and approval process, vacate, indeed, certain public streets at no cost, as well as issue the tax abatement plans to the redeveloper. And it talks about how the plan, the revitalization plan worked brilliantly, okay? We became a cool hip town, um, but it worked brilliantly for wealthy tourists and newcomers, but per, perhaps not so much for the original residents of this diverse beach community. So, um, renovated apartments that were once affordable were converted into expensive condos, pricing residents out of the beachfront east side, and forcing some to move to the west side, a historically black neighborhood that remains mired in poverty. As the development continues to sweep through Asbury Park, and it goes on and on, but my question, first of all, I'm gonna hand you this report, 'cause I, and I'm gonna email it to you, 'cause it's, it's kind of fascinating, and Amy, you're a lawyer, so I think you'll appreciate it, um, as well as the rest of you will appreciate it, right? I think the number one item on your agenda should be how to keep people who live here here. And, and the, I wanna hear a plan from all of you, on how you're gonna keep people that want to stay here, here, and I'm willing to help, and I'm willing to bring in my academic friends, and I'm willing to do whatever I can do to make sure that nobody else gets pushed out, because the, the, the housing... Okay. Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Carrie.
Well, you know what, Carrie, can you give me not, not a hard copy, you can email it, yeah, yeah, my life...
You want a hard copy, anybody?
I do.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry. Should I... You ready?
Hi. Uh, good evening, I'm Madeline Monaco, I live on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. Uh, last night at the planning board meeting, where we were discussing the pool club application, we were told that there were going to be planters, sixty-four feet of planters, that are gonna be on the, on our boardwalk, right in front of...
Yeah, I can't, I can barely hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Is that better?
Yep.
Do you want me to repeat? Anyway, we were told last night, there's gonna be sixty-four feet of planters in front of the pool club, on the boardwalk, effectively taking up about four, uh, feet in width as well. And I asked the question about, when was that decided, to put those planters on the boardwalk, and I was told that it was part of the, uh, plans that were submitted in either June or August, the boardwalk redevelopment plans. We opered both the June and the August redevelopment, boardwalk redevelopment plans, there are no planters on either of those, actually, those plans look identical, we can't even figure out what the difference is. Um, and then my other question is, who decided, we were told that the city decided to put those planters on there, that was the first I'd ever heard of it, and I'm wondering, who decided to put those planters on after we had the design charrette in January? There was nothing in the, at that design charrette that showed any planters. And the concern last night was, these planters are taking up sixty-four feet where we could have benches, uh, perhaps you could have some smaller plants if you want something aesthetic, but there are people who like to use that boardwalk, more and more people every year use that boardwalk. Why are we taking up our boardwalk space to provide some aesthetics for a potential pool club? Those are my two questions. Why are the plans not different? Where are the planters in those plans, and who made that decision? Please.
I don't remember that being part of the plans at all, Michael, I think this is news to me, and I don't, I don't know why we'd have the planters, and I don't remember that being part of the plan.
Be, because I'm, my, Yvonne and myself are on the planning board. I told Amy, "You reply," because I don't want to be conflicted out on the planning board. I didn't reply Monday night at the planning board, I'm not gonna reply now. Michael, you can go ahead, I think Amy just said, in a roundabout way...
We don't remember approving those plans for the planters.
Thank you.
So maybe Michael can answer?
So the mayor called me on Tuesday morning after the meeting, and I said, "I don't remember planters either." Um, I called Mr. Shripka and said, "What was this?" I said, "I don't remember seeing this on any plans." He said it was part of the initial discussions of trying to break up the wall, um, there's nothing set in stone with them. Um, it was not part of the charrette, which is a separate topic, because it was not part of the charrette, this is part of the beach club application. Brian said he had no problems with removing them, um, that'll be part of the process as the planning board comes through, his attorney is shaking his head, "Yes." The mayor had said to me, "Is there concerns from my end about, um, you know, sand getting in the, moving them?" I said, "No, because we can just use a skid steer or loader." I brought that up to Brian, he said, "Again, it's not an issue." This was based upon trying to break up the idea of the, the fencing along the boardwalk side. Brian said he has no problem changing it, his attorney is sitting here, so he heard, she is aware of what I'm saying, it's something that is not going to be occurring for at least another year, year and a half, so there's plenty of times to change that. It, it's a, quite honestly, in my opinion, it's a, it's a non-starter, since we had that discussion with Brian, that it was supposed to break up the wall, and it can be removed.
My question was, who made the decision to put those planters on the boardwalk in the first place? They said it was the city last night, so who made that decision?
I don't know who made a decision of that. I went through... I went through the oper requests that was submitted by Ms. Murphy, she's sitting here, I didn't see the planters on that. Um, and as you know, Ms. Murphy sent another email to me looking, asking me for other plans, which I hadn't had time to go through today, I wanted to make sure that we send the right information. But Brian, again, said that it's not an issue to, to change that up as, as part of the plan.
Well, it is, I think there's an underlying issue here. Something got on those plans without anybody knowing it, and that's more of my concern. How does something like that happen in this process, without anybody knowing that-
So I'm not part of planning, so I'm, I'm not, I'm obviously not on the planning board? I'm just trying to have a better understand of what, of what is being said. At the planning board meeting, they said to you, these planters were inserted into the plans-
Right.
-for the pool club.
For the boardwalk redevelopment.
For the boardwalk redevelopment. I don't think it's up yet.
Just get up and speak, man.
It's, it's more of a process question, if-
You know, for me, it's-
Let me finish first. Yeah, no, it's okay, but I have another point I'd like to make. It's more of a process question, if this happened, if these planters got put on a, our city property, what else is going on? If we hadn't asked the question, this would have never come to light. What else is going on that we don't know about?
I, I think-
That's a deeper question.
Okay, and I, I thank you for your concern. I think your last comment was wrong, I think this council's on top of everything. It was the first time I saw him, and, you know, you heard, the council has not agreed to them, you heard what Michael said, that Mr. Shripka had no problem removing them. So, what was said Monday night?
Yeah.
Was said, but is, you know, for us, for you to say, like, what else is going on? You know, we're saying, like, we're not watching things.
No, I didn't mean like that, John.
Well, that's how it came across.
You know I have a lot of respect for the council.
Okay, so, no, so, it, it was a mistake, and like Michael said, we're hoping that boardwalk's done by Memorial Day, and, you know, the planters won't be there.
Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer Phillips Smith, I represent Asbury Partners. And just to clarify, I did, sorry, just to clarify, I did say they had been approved? I was incorrect, I thought they had been on the plans, they're not. I'll correct that on the record at the planning board meeting at the next time, but that was my mistake, it wasn't nefarious, no one was trying to hide anything. The boxes on the plan were benches, they weren't planters. I mistook that, so I'll correct it on the record at the planning board, and we'll go forward from there.
Again, I'm, okay. Good.
I, 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 we all make mistakes, and I love it when people own up to and say, "Hey, I made a mistake, I'll clarify it, so thank you very much." You know, it was a long meeting, mistake was made, I'm glad it was brought up tonight, it's been cleared. The attorney said she'll clarify it at the next, uh, planning board meeting, that should then just go away. And I, I do appreciate when people say they make mistakes. I've made mistakes, I think everybody in this room has made mistakes, so I appreciate when people admit it. Thank you. Okay.
Motion closed?
Yeah. We're-
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're on to minutes. I have the executive session minutes of August fourteenth, the work session minutes of August fourteenth, and the regular council meeting of August fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to the consent agenda. We have twenty nineteen, two eighty-nine, a resolution approving the special events application. Twenty nineteen, two ninety, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty nineteen budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, the senior settler grant. Twenty nineteen, two ninety-one, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty nineteen budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, a clean communities grant. Twenty nineteen, two ninety-two, canceling a professional service contract to T and M Associates to prepare documents for the proposed north end boardwalk improvement. Twenty nineteen, two ninety-three, a resolution authorizing the Monmouth County Asbury Park Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office program to enable the Asbury Park Police Department to request and acquire excess Department of Defense equipment. Resolution twenty nineteen, two ninety-four, a resolution to refund overpaid taxes on block three five zero five, lot eight point one five, and eight point three two, three oh one, Fourth Avenue, unit one oh one, and two oh one. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. We have twenty nineteen, two ninety-five, a resolution accepting the twenty eighteen municipal audit. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Two, twenty nineteen, two ninety-six, a resolution adopting a corrective action plan in response to the recommendations contained in the twenty eighteen report of audit. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, two ninety-seven, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to twenty nineteen, two seventy, a resolution awarding a contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall? Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Two, twenty nineteen, two ninety-eight, authorizing a professional service contract to IWS Consulting LLC for management assistance. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to twenty nineteen, two ninety-nine, awarding a bid for traffic control signage. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, two eighty-four, resolution of the city of Asbury Park referring the proposed amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan dated August twenty ninth to the planning board, twenty nineteen, to the planning board in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing laws, NJSA forty-eight colon twelve A dash seven. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to twenty nineteen, three hundred-
Motion to table?
Move it.
Second.
Do you want me to read the title, or?
Okay.
It's a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park acting as redevelopment entity, approving and authorizing an agreement with five forty-five Lake Urban Renewal LLC regarding the redevelopment of certain properties within the central business district redevelopment area, and this is a motion to table. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three oh one, amending the contract for T and M Associates for services with the Sunset Lake Master Plan via change order one. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three zero two, a resolution authorizing the leasing of a factory-certified pre-owned aerial ladder fire truck for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three zero, three zero three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a traffic signal equipment. Motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three zero four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Summit Positive Displacement Pump for the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nineteen, three zero five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of cybersecurity testing services. Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three zero six, a resolution authorizing an annual service contract for power DMS for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, three zero seven, entering into an agreement with the Asbury Park Housing Authority for increased public safety. Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to twenty nineteen, three zero eight, a resolution to approve a place-to-place liquor license transfer of Plenary Retail Consumption License one three zero three thirty-two zero three eight zero zero six, Ohana Kitchen Company. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nineteen, three zero nine, a resolution approving a person, a person-to-person liquor license transfer of Plenary Retail License Number one three zero three thirty-three zero four four zero one five from AP Restaurant Four LLC to AP Restaurant Five LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinances for introduction. There is an error in the agenda. Ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-eight is listed as a second reading public hearing. Twenty nineteen thirty-eight is going to be introduced tonight. It was tabled at the last meeting. So, we have ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the adoption of an amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan with a public hearing date of October ninth. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine, an introduction, an ordinance establishing salaries of certain employees within the city of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of September twenty-fifth. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to ordinance twenty nineteen forty, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending chapter seven of the code of the city of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations with a public hearing date of September 25. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To 2019-41, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the city of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations with a public hearing date of September 25. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2019-42, we have a bond ordinance providing for beach utility improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,375,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,375,000 bonds or notes in the city to finance part of the cost thereof, with a public hearing date of October 9. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to second readings public hearings. Do I have a motion to open ordinance 2019-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 49, parking utility to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-32 is now open to the public. If anyone has any questions, please come to the mic and state your name.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2019-32.
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to open ordinance 2019-33 to the public, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the city of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations.
So move.
Second?
Second.
2019-33 is now open to the public. Does anyone have any questions?
Move to close.
Second.
Do I have a motion to adopt 2019-33?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2019-36, do I have a motion to open ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, amending and supplementing Chapter 7 of the Code of the city of Asbury Park regarding traffic and parking regulations?
Move to open. Second.
Anyone have any questions regarding 2019-36?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.[1512.44]